One minute late here. 7:01, I'd like to open the Tuesday, November 9th, Common Council Meeting.
April 9th.
I'm sorry, April 9th. What did I say, November 9th?
Turn the movie here on.
Yeah, and it's really nice outside. Ms. Lee's, would you call the -- or I'm sorry. Mr. Boyce, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lee's, would you give the roll call, please?
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Here.
Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for the March 26, 2019 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six, two abstentions. Questions or comments by citizens who are present?
Approval of the agenda.
Well, we can approve the agenda first. Yeah, I did miss last meeting, so.
That's okay.
Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Hampton?
A motion to amend the agenda to withdraw proposed development presentation number one and to postpone the proposed development presentation number two to the May 14 meeting. Otherwise, it's submitted?
Yes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. I have a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Eight, zero. Now we'll move on to petitions or comments by citizens who are present. And you have no excuse since I had to back up. I have no petition. Anybody who would like to speak, feel free to fill out a comment card out behind the doors outside and pass them to Ms. Lee's. Mr. Mayor, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I've reported quite a bit last time and not a whole lot on what has happened recently, but do have several upcoming events. A week ago, I was in your chambers, the chambers, with about, oh, 25, maybe 30 scouts and their families. And they asked what this room was for, and I said, well, that's where the real leaders of our city take action. But, no, it was an educational situation, and I'm happy to do it. And they didn't have a lot of questions. I was kind of surprised, other than how old you are and do you live in the White House? Some of that stuff I get in elementary. I did attend and was happy to do so. The fire department had their annual awards banquet on Saturday, and I was at the Embassy Suites, and obviously, we're very, very proud of all the departments, but they do a great job. Tomorrow morning, there is a prevail breakfast meeting. They're giving me some kind of award. It's supposed to be a secret, I think, I don't know. There is a, at 5 o'clock tomorrow, there is a ribbon cutting at Heritage Woods. That's the senior living building on 146, just east of 37. I think it turned out well. I went by it the other day. It really looks great. The, we'll be presenting a 40th anniversary proclamation to Janus tomorrow or Thursday. Remember Taste of Business, if you will, the Chambers Taste of Business is Thursday, which is always an outstanding event. Opening night for the baseball, youth baseball program is Friday, and we have a breakfast and reception on the 17th for Ivy Tech in Indianapolis. Basically, talking about the future of Ivy Tech. So that's all I have. Are there any? I do have one more thing, and I was going to start it out with that. We have a special guest, if you will, in our audience tonight. I think he introduced himself to you. With us is Steve Carter, former Attorney General for the State of Indiana, a great person, and now serving Senator Braun as his senior advisor. So, Steve, welcome to Novozov.
Thank you.
With that, are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council committee reports?
I have one short one, Mr. President.
Mr. Taylor?
Tree Board met on April 1st, and the oil business was, we're looking into planting some trees in Little Chicago and Hazel Dell and the median. Actually, this morning, there should have been a quote or bid awarded to the, to get that project started, be started on Hazel Dell Road. Arbor Day, which is fast approaching us, we'll be celebrating Arbor Day on two occasions this year. April 26th at 3:00 p.m., we will be planting a red oak at Federal Hill Commons, and that will be in honor of Mayor Ditzler. On April, or on May 4th, the first farmer's market, we will be handing out saplings and some other stuff to really celebrate the Arbor Day. And then Tree USA, I'm happy to announce that this makes Novozov a 29-year member. And then last would be, the tree department is pruning some trees. That started before, actually started in the fall. Obviously, it stopped for winter, but they will be starting that again, and when that's complete, they will be starting the stump grindings where they've taken out several trees in the last year. That's it.
Any other committee reports? Mr. Jensen?
The Roads Committee met on Friday morning, April 5th. A few highlights of that. One of the traffic committee council items that I had requested several weeks ago was to take a look at the intersection of Kerrigan Road, North Harbor Drive and Oak Bay Drive. It's been an issue for years, and residents have had some concerns. So we're going to put that onto our traffic study plan. Obviously, not probably an immediate need today, but want to get, starting to plan for that as we start to see some growth up in that area going forward. The Midland Trace Trail, Phase 3, is well underway. Tree clearing is complete. We're looking for a completion date of September 1st. If you drive along 32, you'll see a lot of earthwork being done right there by Mustard Sea Gardens, which is pretty exciting. The community crossing grant application, which, as you may know, is a state program through Endot, launched several years ago. We, for the first call of 2019, were awarded $920,715 out of a possible million, so we were pretty excited about that. Those will focus in on some resurfacing projects in Milgrove, on 10th Street, and on Hazel Dell Road going forward. And there'll be another opportunity. They're moving to a twice-a-year call for that project, so we will submit for the remaining amounts later this year. The Levy Trail, my good friend, Mr. Fogg will be glad to know that we are moving forward on that. There's earthwork that has begun. A July 1 completion date is set for that. I know a lot of us are very excited about that. We've talked about that for a long time. That will provide some much-needed connectivity there on our west side for some west side neighborhoods there to the north, so. And then the final portion I will mention, anyone who travels in downtown certainly notices the work on the Logan Street pedestrian bridge that's taking place. That is still scheduled for completion August 31st of this year, and I know I'm looking forward to opening up some thoroughfare there, not just by foot, but to allow the cars to move easier along Logan Street as well. So those are some highlights of the Roads Committee. I appreciate your time.
Any questions for Mr. Jensen? Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Approval of claims?
One more report, Mr. President. We always have the Finance Committee report. Finance Committee met April 4th, and I will keep this short. This is one of our more concise meetings. The Redevelopment Commission annual report is on the agenda as miscellaneous number three. We discuss that. Mr. Murray will fill us in on the details in the meeting. We talked about the claims document review. We have historically, as a council, approved the claims, but typically, in a lot of communities, the Board of Works actually does that as part of their responsibility as a, the procurement agency for the city. So we had some conversation about whether or not the Board of Works ought to be the agent to approve the claims because they frankly are the ones that are signing contracts and executing. And so we can have a little more discussion about that. There wasn't anything cast in stone, but it's something that we had a conversation about, and I thought I'd share that with everybody. The Open Gov Project continues forward. It is anticipated we'll be doing all of our budgeting through Open Gov this year, which will be, I think, an easier way for everybody to input data, and it'll allow us to do some things from a analysis perspective, do some what-if analysis, make some assumptions, and see how that's going to affect what the overall economics look like on a go-forward basis. So I'm looking forward to that. I think it'll help all of us just from a forecasting perspective. Let's see. Claims are reviewed, and they come to this body with a favorable recommendation, and I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. With that, we will move on to approval of claims.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is all those in favor, raise your hand. Eight to zero. Previously discussed ordinances. Council consider ordinance 15-03-19, an ordinance repealing and replacing prior ordinances related to the facade improvement grant program, boundaries and guidelines. Mr. Head?
Evening, President Eyre, members of the council. So before you tonight is the new facade improvement grant ordinance that was first presented to council on March 26th. And just to recap, there's, the reason for the ordinance change is to allow other historic properties within the community to apply for the same grant that is now administered in the central business district. So the first major change is those boundaries, which will be the corporate limits of the city, and the second change, which would be a submittal deadline date each year for applications to be submitted. So since you guys have had the first reading, we have now, would like to request an amendment to the ordinance that you were presented to on March 26th. And that amendment would be to change the 2019 deadline date from March 15th to the system that we currently use, which is a deadline of the Friday, the last Friday of the month to be, to be reviewed the following month. So somebody submitted June, the last Friday in June, they would be reviewed in July. The reason for that change, for that amendment, would be for twofold. For one, it would allow us as staff to market the new changes to the community and to anybody that would be, you know, wanting to ask for a grant. And then, secondly, getting the grant applications into the city. Because it's a fairly obtuse task that we ask folks to do, including to get two contractor bids for each item, those things can take a little bit of time. So if the ordinance was approved tonight, as it is, that would only allow us about a month to do those, to do those two tasks. So to summarize, we would just ask for an amendment to the ordinance to allow for 2019 submittal dates for grant applications to be each month, and then in 2020, we would go ahead and use the submittal deadline that was submitted already, which is March 31st. And happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. Head? Do we have a motion to amend as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend as presented. All those in favor, raise your hand. Eight, zero. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would move that we approve ordinance 1503-19 as amended, an ordinance repealing and replacing prior ordinances relating to the facade improvement grant program, boundaries and guidelines.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. Boyce. Excuse me, Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
That is six aye, zero nay to abstention. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ed. Council consider ordinance 16-03-19, an ordinance approving additional appropriation to reestablish the motor vehicle highway fund at the 2019 adopted budget levels. Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and another item, second reading from an ordinance introduced at the March 26th meeting, and as I explained at that meeting, and it's laid out in the whereas provisions in the ordinance, this is very perfunctory action, reestablishing the budget from the MVH Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, at the level adopted by the council last October. And in the whereas clauses, it talks about the, you know, the reason driving the need for the ordinance is a basic difference of approach between DLGF and local units and DLGF and their kind of paternalistic role overseeing budgets, their calculations of year-end balances versus actual year-end balances, and basically, the way the structure of that process works is if they come to some conclusion, they invoke that conclusion, then it's left to the local fiscal body to respond back after the beginning of the fiscal year with actual data that shows our year-end balances what we thought they were, and that's basically what this does. So no fiscal impact, just basically restores the budget to what you adopted for the MVH Fund.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Motion to open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance 16-03-19.
Mr. President?
Mr. Taylor?
Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Eight to zero. Motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 16-03-19. Council consider ordinance 16-03-19, an ordinance approving additional appropriations to reestablish the motor vehicle highway fund at the 2019 adopted budget levels.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Eight, zero. The ordinance is adopted.
Moving on, council consider ordinance 17-03-19, an ordinance approving additional appropriation to reestablish the Parks and Recreation Fund at 2019 adopted budget level. Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, members of the council, this ordinance is just the exact same thing as the previous ordinance, except for a different fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund. Same issue, same reason, same rationale, same everything, except different fund and different dollar amount, but reestablishing the budget at the adopted level.
Questions of Mr. Spalding? And I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance 17-03-19.
Mr. President? Seeing no one come forward, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing for ordinance 17-03-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your hand. Eight to zero.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 17-03-19. Council consider ordinance 17-03-19, an ordinance approving additional appropriations to reestablish the Parks and Rec Fund at the 2019 adopted budget levels.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 17-03-19, an ordinance approving additional appropriation to reestablish the Parks and Recreation Fund at the 2019 adopted budget levels. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Eight, zero. The ordinance is adopted.
The ordinances for discussion, council consider ordinance 18-04-19, an ordinance amending ordinance 40-10-17 concerning changes to the civilian employee personnel handbook. Ms. Ramon?
Most introduced?
Second.
Seconded to introduce, Ms. Ramon?
Good evening. Outlined in the attached letter, the following changes include section revisions to provide clarification on city policies and to be compliant with state and federal employment laws. A records retention schedule was added to several sections of the handbook. A request is made to provide full-time employees effective hired after January 1st, 2019, with three vacation days after they complete 90 days of employment. Currently, a new employee has to wait a year to receive any vacation time. Also, we are requesting that floating holiday time be used in 15-minute increments. Under the family and medical leave section, additional wording was added for clarification purposes. And lastly, the section under educational assistance, the specific details outlined under this program were removed and information was provided that states that the benefit is based on availability of budgetary resources. And in the future, if funds are appropriated for the benefit, the policy will be thoroughly reviewed and revised. All of these revisions have been approved and reviewed by John Mays, our contracted attorney at Bose McKinnon Evans. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Ms. Ramon?
President, I just have one. I'm just curious, Ali, from a benefit perspective, the three vacation days, I'm certainly not opposed to it, but how is that, or maybe the question is, how are we doing from an employment recruiting perspective? Are you having challenges hiring people to fill positions? Or I know the labor market's tight, so three vacation days is reasonable in my mind, but I'm just wondering from an overall perspective if you're having challenges anywhere.
It's always a matter when we're offering employment to someone, and we talk about wage and benefits, and when we have to let them know that they have to wait a year to receive any vacation time, that's really, you know, that's a deterrent for them to accept employment with us. You know, we try to remind them, you know, you pretty much got it made after the first year. We've got great, you know, vacation time and everything, but getting through that first year, these three vacation times, three vacation days would really help.
Any other questions? I have one. What's the basis of the holiday time being changed from a two-hour interval to a 15-minute interval?
Yes. There are so many times employees need to be off from work that really don't require them to take two hours, because now with vacation and float, you can only take that time in two-hour increments. So maybe you had a school delay, or you need to take your dog to the vet, and you really only need to be gone for 45 minutes. Now, we have to be gone for two full hours, because we can't break it down any smaller than that. So just to allow employees more flexibility in their time, and it's very easy to build in chronos. We already allow employees to use sick time in 15-minute increments, but this would be float time as well.
Any questions? We have first reading, so we'll see you again in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Council consider ordinance 19-04-19, an ordinance amending ordinance 42-10-17 concerning benefits for police and fire employees of the city of Noblesville. Ms. Ramon?
Most introduced?
Second.
Been seconded and introduced, Ms. Ramon?
A lot of these changes are the same as the civilian handbook. They're outlined again in your attached letter. The educational assistance section, the, again, specific details were removed regarding that program, and the benefit is based on the availability of financial resources. I would like to note, though, that educational assistance is a topic that we are going to be discussing in upcoming meetings with the police department, and I do believe they have already started working on a revised policy. And as mentioned, under the civilian handbook, we are requesting for our full-time new police officers hired after January 1st, 2019, that they also receive three vacation days after completing 90 days of employment, and to allow them to have their floating holiday time used in 15-minute increments. And then the last section revised is entitled "The Holidays for Sworn Police Officers," and this amendment would prevent police officers from having a reduction in the holiday hours paid to them if they are on an approved day off that's on a holiday, and if they're called into work. Again, these changes have also been reviewed and approved through John Mays, our contracted attorney, through Bose McKinnon Evans. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions of Ms. Ramon?
President?
Mr. Hampton?
I'm just trying to understand the educational assistance as far as budgetary. Is that something that the police department then will put in their budget to? I don't want the education assistance to go away. I guess that's my concern.
It's something that we will discuss during the meet and confer process with the police department. We are not, you know, removing the policy, but it has not, it is so outdated, we haven't had funding for it, I don't know, 10, 12 years. And if funding is put in place, we'll need to revise it anyway, so we just thought it would be better to remove it altogether.
Thank you.
Sure. I don't mean altogether. Remove it, just with that little blurb. It's still in there.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous number one, council consider memorandum of understanding between the city of Noblesville Lodge, 198 Fraternal Order of Police. Mr. Howard?
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. We're asking the council to consider approval of the memorandum of understanding, which is the agreement between our bargaining unit, which is our FOP Lodge, and the city of Noblesville. Actually, this is retroactive to January 1st. The wording for Section 5 was extremely problematic and took many rewrites to get to a point where it said what everybody wanted it to say, and that's taken a period of several months to do. You actually just incorporated this by ordinance into the Fire and Police Benefits Ordinance, but the wording was very complex.
That was the first reading. We haven't got the yet.
Well, that's right. You're considering it. The other items in Section 1 through 4 are carryforwards from previous MOUs. These are things we just build in every year to provide certain features by agreement with the city. And then the Section 6, the benefit time scheduling, Ms. Ramon just explained the differences in current policy and what's being proposed under a new ordinance. This was approved by the Board of Works this morning also, and for the purposes of the council. Everything in here has been included in the 2019 budget and is fully funded, so it doesn't require any additional funding.
Any questions, Mr. Howard? We have a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve miscellaneous number one, council consider an MOU between the city and Noblesville Lodge, 198 Fraternal Order of Police.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Miscellaneous number two, council to consider consent to collateral assignment of agreements for Campus Centers LLC. Mr. Howard, the last one was three pages, and this is yours.
You know what? I, because I presented this this morning for the works. It's, I think we got several copies in there of what we really need. The first item, it's really the first two pages is what we're considering. Four pages. This is part, one of the last items on the Carter Jackson Promise Road, 146th Street project. About three hours before the closing, we received from Mr. Jackson's counsel, a request to approve an assignment of our development agreement as collateral. He was pledging it as collateral to his bank, First Internet Bank. We reviewed that as written in the first draft. It was, we permitted him to assign our development agreement to the bank, and, but that agreement was a two-way street. There was access to the construction fund, but no correlating duty to make taxpayer payments and make sure that the project was a success. And all those documents, as our friend the banker will tell you, made the pledge to the bank mandatory, and the bank's duty to perform the developer's duties optional. And so we, I let the people know that we weren't, we want it to be a two-way street. I want to thank Sam Swafford in the audience here today, and Steve turned this around pretty quickly, and it is here for your approval, so we will get a copy of the new assignment from Mr. Jackson as well as our consent. And we'll try not to tab too many sign-hears that are redundant. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Howard? So the agreement that we have is not the agreement?
It is the agreement. It's just several copies.
So this agreement, as I've read through and what you've stated through your letter, does give us the security in the event that it does happen to the worst-case scenario when the man takes it back. They will fulfill the agreement as it was presented to us previously.
They will step into Mr. Jackson's shoes, both for, as far as obligations and benefits, yes. And the signature page is on page three, which is the third page on your packet.
Mr. President, just a comment. This is fairly standard practice in the banking industry, so it's not unusual, but I'll commend Mr. Howard for making sure that it is a two-way street, because that's typically how I've seen it historically. It's okay if, you know, you want to take the assignment of it, but you also have to be willing to take the responsibility along with it, not at somebody's option, so. And I appreciate the strikes on the may and shall, and those are all appropriate, so.
That may fall under the theory, it never hurts to ask.
Because he answers all we know, right? Mr. President, I'd make a motion, we approve the consent to collateral assignment of agreements for Campus Center LLC, miscellaneous number two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve miscellaneous number two. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Council consider report of Economic Development Commission, 2018 activities pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14-13. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, President Ayer, members of council. Andrew Murray, Economic Development, for the record. This item, every year, officers of the Redevelopment Commission are required under state statute to submit to the fiscal body a report of previous year activities, and ultimately, this report will be filed to the Department of Local Government Finance on the city's behalf and the commission's behalf by April 15th. And so before you is a report submitted to you from Controller Spalding and myself that meets the statutory requirement. The report, as you'll note, includes four appendices that I will quickly summarize for you. Appendix A includes detail of the commission, so that's, we listed out the members, activities in 2018, as well as the new TIF areas that we established. Appendix B includes a snapshot summary of 2018 revenues, expenditures, cash balances, both at the beginning and end of 2018. Appendix C includes a snapshot summary of outstanding debt in each TIF district, as well as current balances, debt service paid in 2018, and then maturity dates tied to each debt. And then finally, Appendix D is a parcel listing of each TIF area, so I apologize for the 100 pages in the report. That's a majority of it. But to conclude, as you'll note, our TIFs are healthy, our debt coverage is excellent, and we'll continue to track this information to, by district, to further enhance our accounting, our budgeting, our reporting, and our forecasting practices. Ultimately, as this council knows, the goal here is to create business pro formas, business plans for each district. We're not there yet. We've got some work to do, but we'll continue to work hard and diligently towards that goal. As I explained to the commission during their meeting last Friday, if you have any feedback on the format of the report, what's included, what's not included, I certainly welcome that feedback going forward. So with that, I'll stop there. Procedurally, I don't believe this requires any sort of motion, but we just need to acknowledge this report as being filed to this council, and we'll get it submitted on your behalf. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Murray? I have a few questions and comments. As I see this, we're about $900,000 in the red, but we still are carrying a huge cash balance, ending balance. And what I find is interesting, as we go through the ending dates or final maturity dates, we do have several that'll burn off in the next four to five years, which will provide substantial amount of cash for other projects, or to pay off additional bonds of other projects that are out there. The one thing of interest is the Hazledale Road TIF, and it's always been a drain since day one, and we knew it was going to be a drain, and we kind of thought things were going to help it out there with the Pebblebrook project. There are a couple of things that'll help feed that TIF in the hopper, which hopefully will turn it from red to black. But that would be an area that we need to concentrate on, getting some business in there to help get that TIF built up to where it'll carry itself. So those are just a few observations that I pulled out of that, and I'm happy to see the report. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I think you stated it well, and for those that aren't here or haven't seen this, if you're looking on HCTV, you may want to take a look at this report, because this has really got a fair amount of information in it in terms of what's happening from a debt perspective and where the cash flows go. And so, in light of questions that you get regarding TIFs and what's going on with the debt levels, et cetera, this report does a very, very good job of outlining exactly what's happening in those TIF districts. So if you're curious, if you want to know what those specifics are, this is a good report to take a look at, and if you have questions about it, feel free to ask any of us, or Economic Development, or the Controller's Office for that matter. So, but it's very well put together, and it's, this is a good piece of information to have.
O'Connor? Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn miscellaneous number four over to Mr. Hampton to present, and hopefully it'll be the last time I have to do that with this project.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item miscellaneous number four, the council to consider notification of a demolition permit filed in the Planning Department for a building located at 77 and 83 South 9th Street. Ms. Reed?
Good evening. This item is before you this evening as a notification. You're receiving notice that a building permit has been filed. Per Article 4 in the UDO, I need to provide you notice, and then 30 days after the notice is the earliest a demolition can happen within this specific district. I made sure we copied and pasted. I made sure we copied and pasted the ordinance and highlighted that for you, so that's in your packet specifically, if you want to know what that district is. This is the first one of this type, at least since I've been here. I'm not sure Christie had any either, so I can't speak to when this was adopted or the reason behind that, just that I am here today to provide you notice that a demolition permit was filed. That is for the Holt and Ayers Building, for the future Levinson site. So, again, no action required, just notification.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Reed?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Council comments, do I have any? If there is anything exciting to comment on with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.